All right, so it's six o'clock, I guess we can get started. And Phil is unable to join us tonight, so we'll need a volunteer as an interim chair. And also, I'd like to introduce our two new members of the board, Lisa Smirik and Robin Cohen. Lisa will be participating as the alternate in tonight, and Robin is just here to observe. But welcome to both of them.
Thank you.
Nice to be here.
Yep.
So are there any of the regular members who would volunteer to serve as interim chair?
I don't think I'm allowed to.
I think technically not, and Chad, I'd have to double check, I'm not sure if you are either.
I'm de facto.
Okay, well, thanks, Chris.
Yep, so let's do the call to order then.
All right. Time I have is 6:01, and I will call the roll. As a reminder, please state the city and state that you're participating from. Becker?
I'm here, participating from Dexter, Michigan.
Phil?
Here remotely from Dexter, Michigan.
Wallaker? Present from the city of Ann Arbor. Smirik?
From Dexter, Michigan.
And Griffin?
Present calling in remotely from the city of Dexter, Michigan.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item is the approval of the minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
I did not have any comments.
No comments on my end.
All right, sorry, Chris.
Yeah, do you want to do a voice vote or a roll call?
We'll stick with the roll. Becker?
Hi.
Hill?
Hi.
Wallaker?
Hi.
Smirik?
Hi.
Griffin?
Hi.
Thank you.
Next item is the approval of the agenda.
I'll move to per the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Was that Lisa?
Yes.
Hill?
Hi.
Wallaker?
Hi.
Griffin?
Hi.
Smirik?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
All right. The next item is the, sorry, the staff report, which is including your packet. Some of the highlights are that council last night held a public hearing for a small cell ordinance, which is an area that, like most telecommunications, is very stringently governed by the state. But the city adopted in ordinance to exercise the discretion that local governments are allowed in regulating where, to the extent that the city can, small cell infrastructure is located, and again, to the extent allowable, design standards. There's also some items in the staff report about a request from the 150 Jeffords Homeowners Association. They're interested in new sidewalk ramps. The existing sidewalk ramps are ADA compliant, but the HOA is interested in having ramps located closer to the entrances. So since the sidewalk is within the DDA, that'll be something that'll be discussed at the DDA meeting on how that would be accommodated. Also, there are two site plan projects that the planning commission will be reviewing next week. The first is the Millennium Place Residential Development on Grand Street. That'll be a three-story, 23-unit, I believe owner-occupied structure. I suspect a condo, and that's just north of Grandview Commons. And then the other item is the Care to Cure, single-story, two-unit commercial building on Dexter and Arbor. Does anyone have any questions on the staff report? All right.
All right.
What's the next portion, the conflict of interest?
Yes, so if anyone has any potential conflict of interest or was engaged in ex parte communication of any kind, now would be the time to mention it to the board. Seeing none, all right.
So now we're going to open the public hearing?
Oh, we'll start, I'll introduce the case first, and then I'll introduce the case and give a presentation and respond to questions. Then the petitioner will be able to do the same, and then we'll have the formal public hearing portion. But I'm not yet seeing any members of the public in attendance. Right, so I'll go ahead and get started then. So the case for the board tonight is AP 2020.21-21 ZBA 3134 Baker Road. The applicant, Ms. Cassandra Provenzola, is requesting two variances. One is a .7-foot variance from the five-foot minimum side yard setback. The other is an 8.4-foot variance from the minimum 10-foot required setback required of properties of the DC zoning district. This is for a property located at 3134 Baker, and it's also within the Baker Road corridor overlay district. So the variances are necessary because the applicant is interested in constructing a breezeway, an enclosed breezeway between an existing non-conforming garage and the principal dwelling on the property. The applicant's indicated she intends to use the property as a location for her interior design business, and which is a permitted use in the DC district. So the existing garage on the site is non-conforming because of its 1.6-foot setback from the rear lot line, as well as its approximately five-foot setback from the principal building. All detached accessory structures are permitted to be no closer than three feet from the side or rear lot line, and have to be at least 10 feet from other structures. The requirements for attached accessory structures are that the setback requirements for the principal structure would apply. So if the breezeway were built, then a 10-foot rear yard setback would apply, and a five-foot minimum side yard setback would apply. And this is only technical, because as noted in the staff report, the applicant's not actually proposing any expansion of the structure towards the side or rear lot lines. In addition, the breezeway would eliminate that nonconformity of the proximity between the principal structure and the garage. So the zoning ordinance does have alternative provisions and criteria that the ZBA can grant approval for a nonconforming structure to be expanded. That criteria has a less stringent standard of review than that of a variance, but it only applies in cases where an existing, where an encroachment is not being increased. So for example, if I'll come back to an example in a moment. Under that provision, an existing encroachment can't be increased, so the proposed addition has to otherwise comply with the dimensional requirements of the ordinance, and that expansion can't create any new nonconformities. So even though the applicant isn't proposing any structural expansions that would increase the garages proximity to the lot lines, there is a technical creation of a nonconformity and a technical expansion. So that's why the variances are required, and I'm going to share my screen, because I think visuals may help. Can everyone see the packet? Oh, not yet.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You see it, it is just small.
Okay. My PDF reader isn't working for some reason, but hopefully, hopefully that works. So this is the subject site. The breezeway is proposed between the detached garage here and the principal structure here. So considering a variance request, the ordinance establishes six different criteria that are mandated by state law that need to be met in order for variances to be granted. And all of those criteria need to be met. The first of which is practical difficulty. It's some characteristic of the topography of a property or the property boundaries or dimensions that make compliance with an ordinance requirement difficult. And there are certainly factors in this case that could qualify as a practical difficulty. The first of which is the size of the subject site. At roughly 6,700 square feet, it is among the smallest in the Village Commercial District. The median size of other properties in that same district are roughly 1,100 square feet. And so the setback requirements are designed for larger properties, and also properties that are more of a conventionally square shape. There are also, the dimensions of the subject site are also unique. As you can see in this, on the Baker Road corridor on the east side of the road, and in the heading north towards the intersection of Ann Arbor Street, all of the properties there are somewhat of an unusual configuration. And so where the garage is located on the subject site is in this odd little bump out that's actually abutted on two sides by the same property to the north, which I would describe this area as, for all practical purposes, a continuation of the side yard. So those are both the size and the shape of the lot, and its orientation in relation to others could qualify as a practical difficulty. The next standard is substantial justice, that granting the requested variance would relieve a legitimate practical burden for the applicant, and would also be consistent with the ordinance provisions allowed, or that other property owners need to follow. And so, as I alluded to earlier, the proposed breezeway would only result in the technical expansion of a nonconforming structure and the creation of a new nonconformity, even though, like I said, there's no the footprint of the garage will be maintained, and there's not going to be any additional expansion towards the side or rear lot lines, and I hopefully have the graphics that I included in the staff report up on display. So this is a rough sketch of the breezeway that the applicant is proposing here in figure one. And as an example, in figure two, I took an approximation of the existing principal structure and switched it with the location of the detached garage. So, and there are other properties with this sort of circumstance shown in figure two, present in the DC district. So if the arrangement shown in figure two was the case on the subject site, where the principal structure was the building that encroached, the detached garage was not, the breezeway could be permitted without a variance, and potentially even without that alternate review to expand a nonconforming structure if the breezeway was all within the permitted building envelope. So all that said, granting the requested variances could do substantial justice, because the practical impact of the variances would be comparable to an otherwise permissible expansion of a nonconforming structure under a different criteria. The remaining standards are public safety and welfare. Again, granting the variances would be consistent, at least in staff's opinion, with the intent of the ordinance. The extraordinary circumstances of the property are, I more or less described in the practical difficulty section. That criterion requires that the, whatever the circumstances are that are leading to the variance request, they need to be unique, and this is certainly a unique property, so that standard could be met. The circumstances also can't be self-created by the applicant, given the age of the structures, they do not appear to be. For the last two criteria, staff does not believe there'll be any public nuisance or hazard that the proposed breezeway would create, and the proposal does seem to be consistent with the city's master plan and the use of the surrounding properties. That's all I have for the report, and does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. How does the elimination of the current nonconforming setback between the garage and the house play into our overall analysis of this case? Is that something that we should factor into whether or not to approve or deny this request?
I would say so. It is somewhat nuanced in that this request, there's a lot of nuance to this request, but I think that eliminating one nonconformity would be an overall step towards compliance with the ordinance standards.
That's all I have.
Okay.
So I'm curious about, isn't there a rule about how much the property is allowed to be covered with structures? And how that interacts with the storm drains and all of this? Would this, do you think, actually improve that? I went over and looked at the site, and it looks like, to me, that's a problem with drainage waiting to happen, that space in between the garage and the house. And maybe it's good that we're, you know, that she's going to roof that over.
I can also comment on that, if that's okay, Mike.
If you don't mind waiting till the presentation.
Okay.
Thank you. That's not, the storm question is not something I have looked at. So I couldn't tell you one way or the other. I don't see the proposal being any sort of detriment for drainage, though.
Yeah, I think it's kind of an improvement, but for the sake of drainage, there's rules about how much square footage is allowed to be covered. Do we have to say something about that when we approve it?
Oh, you don't have to address that. So the maximum lot coverage permitted in the DC district is 80%. So even with the breezeway, the structure, the coverage of the structures on site will still be well below that requirement.
Okay, good.
I don't, I don't have any additional questions. This seems fine to me, it seemed pretty straightforward. I appreciated your written description and oral summary.
Thanks.
I don't have any comments either, seems good.
All right, so then would you reopen it up for the petitioner's presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
Nice to meet all of you, I just appreciate seeing your faces as well, and Mike's help in all of this. This was all completely new to me, even owning a design business and dealing with the building department on a weekly basis. This has been a completely different level, so this is my first time seeing a variance committee, so hello. To address like Catherine's issue, I am going to be addressing the drainage issue at the house in general, and just making improvements on that structure in its entirety to bring that up to what I think would be a better standard for Dexter, and it's, you know, at that intersection as well. But the, I think Mike says it very well, but in my blatant terms is, I don't want to increase essentially the footprint of the house at all. I'm just looking for a way to make the quirky little spaces that I have in that property work for our new, our new business plan, and not in tearing down what I deem as a very historic structure as well. The house was, just as a side note, sold to me as like a 1925 home. And upon further inspection, we believe that it's potentially like an 1840s or 50s home, so we're still kind of working with the historical society to dig that out. But just trying to preserve a little bit of history, and then also make the property up to today's standards, as well as making it accessible and fixing any of the structure issues, drainage issues that we come into along the way. That's all I got.
Does anyone have any questions?
I'm good.
All right, as far as I know, there's no public here, so can we skip the public comment section then?
We'll say, we opened it at 6:22, and seeing no members, the public presence closes again at 6:22.
Okay. All right, so we'll, I assume there's no rebuttal needed here. So let's close the public hearing.
All right.
Then I guess let's open up the business session and have a discussion.
I thought that Mike's summary was concise. I made a point to try to take notes, so that when a motion is made, I can, because I think we have to list for each of these six criteria. To what extent it meets those, I felt like it met them, so I would feel comfortable approving this request.
Go ahead, Catherine.
I would feel comfortable approving it as well, I don't see any issues.
Yeah, I personally like the idea that we're getting rid of one of the nonconformities on the site. That's one of the big selling points for me.
And which one is that, can you remind me?
That's the setback requirement between the accessory structure and the main, I'll call it house. Does anyone have anything else to add? Does anyone have a proposed motion?
I'm happy to make that motion.
Okay.
I'll read through it entirely here. Based on the information provided by the applicant and staff on the July 21st, 2021 zoning board of appeals meeting, the board determines that the variances requested in application AP 2020.21-21 ZBA 3134 Baker Road submitted by Ms. Cassandra Provenzola for a property located at 3134 Baker Road, Dexter, Michigan, 48130 meets the criteria required for a variance pursuant to Section 24.06A. Therefore, let it be resolved, the zoning board of appeals grants the following variances. A .7-foot variance from the five-foot minimum side yard setback required by Article 20 of the City of Dexter zoning ordinance, and two, an 8.4-foot variance from the 10-foot minimum rear yard setback required by Article 20 of the City of Dexter zoning ordinance. Let it be further resolved, a minimum north side side yard setback of 4.3 feet, and a minimum rear yard setback of 1.6 feet shall be permitted in order for the applicant to construct a breezeway between the existing nonconforming detached garage and an existing single-family dwelling, subject to the following conditions. Number one, the extent of the variance is limited to the minimum dimensions necessary to allow the existing garage to remain in place. The determination was made based on the findings per Section 24.06A of the City of Dexter zoning ordinance. And the findings are, no practical difficulties, no substantial, or I'm sorry, the standards are met. There are practical difficulties, the standards have met for substantial justice. The standards have been met for public safety and welfare, the standards have been met for extraordinary circumstances. The standards have been, have been met for no safety hazard or nuisance, and the standards have been, have been met in relation, relationship to adjacent land uses. I think that's it, right?
Thanks, Chad, I know that's a slog. If you don't mind adding, just, it can be even very brief, just specifics of the case itself, or the findings of fact that for why each criteria is met, like, for example, the size of the lot and its dimensions, or even just citing the staff report, and it can be very brief.
Yeah, in fact, that's what I'm looking through to refer to, is the staff reports. And if it's just, if it's okay to refer to the staff reports, staff report in regards to each one of those, that criteria, that's what I'll, that's what I would suggest. However, if you would like, I can also go through your comments relative, or I mean, staff comments relative to each one of the pieces of criteria. You tell me.
Um. For the sake of brevity, you amend your motion to say citing, citing the evidence document in the staff report, however, what my formal recommendation would be, and certainly if this was a more contentious case, or less straightforward, you would want to cite the actual facts of the case. And again, it could be very brief, but, for example, practical difficulties due to the small lot size and dimension, and unique dimensions of the property.
Oh, you want me to, in fact, do that, rather than say just what you just said?
Sure, if you're able to, sure.
Or in regards to the practical difficulties of the site, the lot size, the configuration of the lot would make strict application of the setback requirements would create a practical, a practical difficulty. The the number two would be, which one is that?
Substantial justice?
Yeah, substantial justice, for some reason I mixed that up here. I'm going to skip ahead, and I'll come back to that one. In regards to public safety and welfare, granting the requested variance is in, is consistent with, as you put it, as, as the staff put it, is consistent with the spirit of the city's setback, uh, and nonconforming structure requirements. Extraordinary circumstances, the circumstances of the, of the subject site, uh, the shape and configuration and the history of the site, are not the, uh, are not the, um, are not of the application's creation that preceded the ownership of this particular property. There is no hazard, safety hazard or nuisance, um, based on this particular, um, um, request for variance since the, uh, since basically it's a simple connection of two buildings. The relationship to the adjacent land uses, um, um, didum, dum, dum, is, um, um, is in a, is, um, it meets, it, it does not exceed the, um, the, the, let me see this. It does not affect the, um, the, the, uh, uses of the other, of the adjacent land uses, that being the post off of it, of course, and the residents on the other side, on the south side. Though jumping back to number two, which was substantial justice, that, um, the, the expansion, while expansion of nonconforming structure, is intended for, uh, commercial use, it, um, um, it meets the criteria of the, um, the substantial justice for allowing the applicant to, to, um, to in fact add, uh, they had the addition to her building and the garage, the connection. Now, that's a pretty sketch together, um, um, addition to, to my motion, and it would have been much better for me to call on Jamie since she was making note, taking notes on all of these. But does that, uh, handle what you were looking for there, uh, Mike?
Yes, I, I think you covered everything.
Good.
I would be happy to second the motion, um, with the modification to today's date because I think written in the packet, it says July twenty-first. So if you're open to that friendly amendment to the twenty-seventh, that's, I'd be happy to second.
Absolutely.
Thanks for that. All right, shall I call a roll?
Sounds good.
Becker?
Aye.
Smirik?
Bye.
Griffin?
Aye.
Wallaker?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
All right, the variances are granted. Thank you, Cassandra.
Thank you.
So I'll be in touch, uh, regarding your next steps for permits.
Okay, yay. Thank you, everybody.
We look forward to seeing it.
I'm so excited. It's gonna be really pretty.
Are you relocating your current, um, place?
So we, we have this building and, um, we leased this place. Um, and our original intent, when I purchased this property in COVID times, when everything got very, very scary for every single business on the market, was to relocate. That still might be our intent, but we do also really love this place, so we may look at that as just maybe a secondary expansion, but, it's still kind of up in the air. I think that I have to see it in construction a little bit more. It's, uh, it's kind of, we took apart a couple of components on the inside just to see what we're looking at to kind of make determinations, but it's still kind of new to tell. If that makes sense, but I'm, I don't want to build out the back because of the lot size. It is kind of awkward in this pie shape that it's in. I have kind of a vision of a, a really pretty, you know, patio area and different spaces, just something to look at that's a little bit different on Baker Road, so. Then it's kind of state.
Yeah.
Yeah, nice to meet all of you.
Nice to meet you.
All right, so, um, as far as other business, I, I guess I would mention, um, so that the, the board standard practice is to meet at the regular meeting, uh, the following month, just to approve the minutes. If anyone has a, uh, um, if anyone has a schedule conflict or a lot of members have a schedule conflict, um, could let us know and we could, uh, consider postponing, but, um, should be a pretty quick meeting.
And that's supposed to be August sixteenth, it looks like.
Yes.
The third Monday?
Yeah. So we'll just, unless anyone has a schedule, it'll be the sixteenth, and unless anyone has a schedule conflict, we'll plan to proceed with that. Um, I'll also try to include, uh, some, uh, a brief overview of those twenty-four oh-six-oh-five requirement, the, um, alternate criteria for expanding a nonconforming structure, because I know it's something we don't come across a lot, but it is nice just to be able to have that option in cases where we can apply it, to let someone do something with their property without, uh, quite needing to demonstrate the need for a variance. So, I'll, I'll, next time, I'll include just a quick summary of that packet. Oh, and at the next meeting, there also need to be an election of officers.
What does that entail?
Um, just a, a, a vote and, um, Jamie, like you mentioned, I know the council representative, uh, cannot be an officer. Chad, I'll double check on whether, um, PC representative can or cannot, if you're interested, but, um, just like the other boards and commissions, if you're interested in doing so, um, shoot me an email or simply, uh, decide on a limb at the meeting and then the board will hold a, we'll take volunteers or, uh, appointments and then hold a vote.
How many officers do we have to fill?
Um, a chair and vice chair, and, uh, staff is designated as a recording secretary. So that'll be something to think about, uh, next time. So, um, that's all I have and unless anyone has anything else, Chris, I think we're good to adjourn.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And we could just do a voice vote for this one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.